Let's go. Glad to see a full house. Glad to see a full house, and it is now time to begin the open session to hear public comments before closed session.
Okay, I will go ahead and do the roll. Councilmember Bond is absent. Councilmember Brown is absent. Councilmember Jimenez?
Presente.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Zapata is absent, and Mayor Martinez?
Here.
Okay. Following this evening during closed session, the council will discuss the following items. Under item C1, liability claims. Claimant Laquana Caston. Claimant Robbie Hurtado. Claimant Talitha Nguyen. And Terminal 1 Development. Under item C2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. Doe Barajas versus City of Richmond. Under item C3, conference with labor negotiators. Agent Agency Representatives Sharon Taylor, Jack Hughes. And Lisa Charbonne. Employee Organizations SEI Local 1021 Full-Time Unit and Part-Time Unit. IFPTE Local 21 Mid-Level Management Unit and Executive Management Units. Richmond Police Officers Association, RPOA. Richmond Police Management Association, RPMA. IAFF Local 188. And Richmond Fire Management Association, RFMA. Next item is public comment before closed session, and we have 13 speakers. As a reminder, public comment before closed session is an opportunity for the public to make comments only on the items listed under closed session. And the first group of speakers will be Cordell Handler, Yvette Williams Barr, Michelle Mylum, Johnny Hill, and Ron Collins, if you'll line up.
Okay. So, good afternoon, Mayor Martinez. Um, council. For the record, I am Cordell Handler, and I am a concerned Richmond resident. So, you see this behind me? The unions. I would hope that this council would like take some thought into this, because you all have families, and they have families they have to support. Think about it, though. The prices, the price of food are getting ridiculous. They need, they need food and shelters to survive in these tough times, so you have two choices. You can either, when you go back in there, think about all this, think about what the unions have done for the city. Think about that. They need, they need as much support as they can, they need as much support as they can get, so I guarantee you. Think about it, though. They have, they have to come to work every day to support themselves, but, but this, today is a new day. It's a new day in Richmond, that the unions. It's a new day in Richmond. You would either go in the back, think about all these unions, or they will strike. But if you don't want that to, if you don't want that to happen, y'all need to come to some sort of like conclusion, so I will quote something out of the Bible, let's say, reap what you sow. So, I'm gonna leave it at that.
Thank you. The next speaker is Yvette Williams Barr.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martinez and council members. Members of the Mid Manager Bargaining Unit, represented by IFPTE Local 21, are proud to stand in solidarity with our brothers and sisters of SEIU Local 1021 as we collectively fight for fair and equitable contracts for our members, the city's general employees. We are here today, now 56 days and counting, since our labor contracts expired, to urge you to instruct the city's negotiating team to stop stalling and to end divisive tactics that treat the various bargaining groups unevenly. From the very start of these negotiations, the city's team has slow-played the process and refused to meaningfully engage. We Richmond workers are not adversaries. We are actually your partners. We are the same people who helped voters pass measures that secured critical funding for city services. We are, we are the people who keep Richmond moving forward every single day. Under the city's current elected leadership, good decisions are being made, and the city's future is bright. But the progress cannot be fully realized unless labor is treated as a true partner. And that begins with showing seriousness and good faith at the bargaining table. Trust is built on action, not empty promises, and doing the same thing over and over, expecting a different result, is the definition of insanity. It's time to stop the insanity. What's needed now is for the city's team to step up, to stop stalling, stop dividing, and start working with us on priority issues, so these contracts can be settled, and we can stay focused on delivering the services that the Richmond residents count on every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michelle Mylum.
Good afternoon to the mayor and the city council. My name is Michelle Mylum, a member of Local 21. But this is not just about Local 21, it's about SDIU, it's about all our labor unions, and it's not about unions. It's about the employees and the people who do the work. 56 days without a contract. Let's do the math. 48 encampments closed. 48 more serviced. 143 crisis calls answered. One ghost ship averted. 12 multi-agency responses coordinated. 12 K rails placed. 25 businesses coordinated with. 150 neighborhood councils and watch groups supported. 28 National Night Out sites staffed. Two citywide events delivered. 115 hours of serving Richmond community groups. Eight weekly encampment reports. 112 meetings attended. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people offered housing and shelter dispatched. 100 bags of garbage collected. Hundreds of roaches in a bag at a substandard housing development. Eight emergency housing clients placed, many of them mothers with children living in their cars. Dozens of victims of crime supported. 56 days and at least two full reports of 20 hours of time spent away from family and friends. 56 days is enough. And imagine what would have happened if nothing happened in those 56 days. I urge you. We're not asking to be unreasonable, but simply to be honored and heard as the people who carry out the will of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Johnny Hill. Johnny Hill. The next speaker is Johnny Hill.
Good evening, beautiful members of the DAIS. A little nervous, though, it's my first time doing this in public, but here we go. Alright, so here we go. My name is Johnny Hill, Richmond resident, Richmond homeowner, um, Richmond pal, football and baseball coach, West Contra Costa County School District, parent volunteer, formal 1021 member, current 1021 member, public servant, and for the last 12 years, an employee here at the city of Richmond. Members of the DAIS, like you, like me, like all my brothers and sisters here, we wear a lot of hats for this Richmond, California. The city of pride and purpose. I have a real unique job here at the city of Richmond. I work in the information technology department. I pretty much know all 800-plus employees. I've had conversations with all of you here and all the 800-plus employees. We all have a lot in common. We all want to live a long, successful, happy, healthy life. And we all understand that the city needs revenue. The city needs cost-saving, right? The city also needs us to step up and put in those long hours, right? We do that, just like y'all do that. All I'm asking for y'all to do is when y'all go back there and y'all do negotiations, just remember that, that we're people. And in the time of our president, with all the crazy stuff he's saying, in the time of AI and all this artificial stuff, it's still great to always interact with human beings. All my brothers and sisters here. And we all love Richmond. We all want Richmond to prosper. All we want is just a fair living wage. That's it. And with that, I just want to say, we love Richmond.
The next speaker is Ron Collins. Ron Collins.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Ron Collins. I'm an SEIU staffer, and I'm the chief negotiator for the bargaining unit, SEIU 10-1 Full-Time and Part-Time. I want to talk to you a little bit about what's happened with bargaining, which would take me about two seconds, because not much has happened in bargain from, from your committee. And, and you know, people probably don't know who Jack Hughes is, right? At the end of the day, today, no one knows who Jack Hughes is. He's the chief negotiator for you all, but you know what? Those folks out there, the citizens that vote for you all, they know who you all are. And they're gonna, you know, you have, you have to take that into account. They don't know Jack Hughes, but they know the mayor and they know the council members. And we appreciate everything you all have done. I appreciate your service to the city. I want to talk to you, we've been in bargaining, we started bargaining April 14th, and today is August 26th. 134 days. 134 days we've been in bargaining, okay? We've had eight joint sessions. Pretty sober. 134 days, eight sessions, no contract, been without a contract for 56 days. We have 35 proposals on the table. They've answered four. Two on wages, and two that we put across the table to protect the city of Richmond against the asshole in the White House, okay? That's what we did. We wanted to protect the city, and we put those proposals, they rejected all the proposals that we put across to protect, uh, excuse me, to protect the city. What's even more sobering, of those 134 days, we've had eight days in bargaining. How many hours do you think we've had in bargain? Less than eight. Less than one day's work we've had at the bargaining table jointly. That's unacceptable, and it's going to fall back on you all, not Jack Hughes. We need a contract. We need it today. These people, I don't, I don't live in Richmond, but I have to tell you, I've done this work for 35 years. I've never seen the scheduling process that they've used, and you're going to hear more from that from some of my, my, uh, the members at SEIU 10-1. But it just, we really need to get this home. We need to get it across the finish line. They're without a contract, and it's not fair. These folks are so dedicated to you all and the city of Richmond and the residents here.
Your time has expired, sir. Thank you. The next speaker. The next group of speakers will be Angela Cox, Sheila Williams, Ofelia Alvarez, George Kapovanov, Isaac Martinez, Sean Staubam, Joe Summers, and Kevin Tisdale. Angela Cox, if you'll come up, please. Angela Cox.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council members. My name is Angela Cox. I'm beginning my 40th year of service to the city of Richmond and the Richmond residents. And because I have had this service, I was able to afford to buy a home, to send my child to college, and to continue to serve this great city. For example, if a city council member contacted the city manager to address an issue within the community, she would then fire off an email to the appropriate staff to immediately handle the, or address the issue. There would be no delay in checking on the issue. It would be handled, or at least proper response would be provided with the potential corrective actions. Well, city council, the employees have an issue. We are 56-plus days without a contract. We have met at the bargaining table, and we have been delayed. We need a fair contract with wages and language that support Richmond workers, provide the community with the service they deserve. We are coming to you so that you can go to see, to the city manager and get her to respond immediately, just as she would have if we were responding on behalf to any other citizen or community issue. Your employees value Richmond. They love Richmond and the communities all around this great city. We need you to, you all to show that love back to us, so that we can continue to serve the residents with pride and purpose. What does it mean to gain the world but lose your soul? Over the past few years, the city has profited handsomely by the work of the community and SEIU to change the direction of the city's finances. Now that labor is asking for the city to provide its fair share, we are met with a cold shoulder. The soul of the city is its workforce, its arm that reach out to aid the community at events. And in the library, it's the smile that you get when being greeted at the front counter.
In 6th chapter, it, uh, we're gonna go to the 6th, no, no, 4th verse. It says, "But let every man prove his own work, and after that, after then shall he have rejoicing in himself alone and not in another. For every man shall bear his own burdens." Then it goes to verse 7. "Be not deceived; God is not mocked; for whatsoever man soweth, that shall he also reap." I just want to say that we want you to recognize our hard work. We come every day, sometimes not feeling well. Sometimes we're leaving our families, um, not in a good place, but we're here. We want you to recognize our hard work and dedication to the city and the community. We are the backbone of our community. The rising cost of living has impacted our members significantly. And what we are asking for in our contract, it could address that alone with any disparities. If the city offers a competitive wage and benefits, under this contract, it's an investment in the city's future. You reap what you sow. Your future outcomes are shaped by your present actions.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ofelia Alvarez.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name is Ofelia Alvarez, and I work in the finance.
My name is Ofelia Alvarez, and I work in the finance department in the purchasing division. And I am also a Richmond resident. Richmond employees have faced rising costs of living, heavy workloads, and increasing demands from the public. But we continue to show up, serve this community, and deliver essential services with pride. We are only asking for a contract that recognizes that reality, one that includes fair and competitive wage increases and good-faith bargaining. We urge the council to direct your negotiation team to come prepared to respond to our proposals, to bargain in good faith, and to commit to reaching a fair agreement without further delays. Thank you.
The next speaker is George Kapovanov.
Mayor Martinez, honorable council members, thank you for listening to us, and I want to resonate on what my colleagues had just said, so you're pretty much aware. It's a beautiful city, a lot of potentials, great possibilities, great people, but people expect from us to do good customer service. We expect from you to do good leadership. We cannot continue in the way we've, we've been doing it for a long time. I, some departments been short-staffed for months and years, and that is not a good way to sustain good customer service. We rely increasingly on people, outside people, consultants, and that puts additional burden on the employees. They had to train, clean up the mess, respond to all the complaints, and it makes everything a lot more difficult, and it shouldn't be. It's a simple process if you have the right people. So please listen to all these dedicated people and try to keep them until we can, because pretty soon, once we break the link, it's going to be too late. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Isaac Martinez.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members, city manager. My name is Isaac Martinez, and I proudly work for the city of Richmond for the past decade in the street department and the division of signs, lines, and traffic. We strike, put up all the signs, everything, y'all know me. We just wanted to come today, always talk about what's not going on. We want to thank y'all from our division, from the streets, for the certain materials and certain machines that y'all did pass to let us have. We want to thank y'all. But we also want to let you know that we ain't got no more employees to run the machines. We want to, we want to thank you for expanding our budget three times what it was five years ago, but we don't got no more people to use the material. So we asking right now that it's not y'all doing, it's the negotiating team. When we bring things to the table, we don't even get an answer. So it's really not negotiating, it's more one-sided. It's us giving y'all something, and y'all just staring at us, telling us to come back, and not giving us an answer. So right now, we asking that we get some kind of answer, some negotiation, somebody really like looking at what we doing, how important it is, and what it means to us as the little workers, that we need like a fair contract. We need good wages. We need a wage that's at least somewhere adding up with other cities around, because most of the coworkers and employees I have have been leaving, going other places where the wage isn't a joke. So I'm not trying to be retraining people over and over. We're not trying to rehire. We're trying to get people that stay here so we can have proper crews, proper ways to take care of our family and children. That's all we asking with the contracts that we're putting forth, just somebody to meet us halfway, to give us a way to exist in Richmond. It's hard for us to even live out here. You see me all the time. I'm always somewhere trying to get something from y'all because I can't afford to live in Richmond, but I'm working here every day. We just asking for a fair wage, a fair contract, and we've been here before. We thank you for what you've given to us already, but please give us the proper utilities to use to be the best that we can for the city of Richmond. Like I said, I've been here for a minute, it's not too much happened. And it should be happening real quick because the change is really finna come. So we asking you right now, please at least think about what we bringing towards the table and make a conscious and smart decision about it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sean Staubam. Sean Staubam.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martinez and members of the city council. It's really great to be back in Richmond. Sean Staubam, I'm the staff representative for IFPT Local 21 in Richmond. And every time I'm in Richmond, it feeds my heart and my soul to see the amazing workers behind you who dedicate so much of their lives to making this city a better place for everybody who lives here. And under your leadership, we've seen Richmond turn a corner. We've seen good decisions that are in the best interests of Richmond residents. All we need now is for you to instruct your city's negotiating team to come to the bargaining table with the same level of commitment to your workers that you've shown to Richmond residents. Now, when I stepped into this bargaining process just recently, what I noticed was for months, no progress was made at any of the tables. And more recently, we're seeing some proposals that are uneven across bargaining units, that are divisive, and that aren't addressing the needs of the workers. This isn't hard to solve, but we need the city's negotiating team to come with a genuine commitment to solve these problems and get the workers a fair contract. Richmond has a bright future, but you can't get to that bright future if you're gonna treat Richmond workers the way they were treated in the past. The approach toward bargaining has to change. You all can instruct your city negotiating team to change, and that's our request today. Thanks very much, and it's great to see you all again.
The next speaker is Joe Summers.
Counsel, Joe Summers with the Contra Costa Labor Council, representing ninety unions across the county of Contra Costa. And I'm here today to just let you know that we stand in solidarity with all the workers here behind me. I just need to let you know that from what I've seen here today and what I've heard from the workers, like at this moment, like you're failing your workforce. They've been out of contract for months, and they are, then the negotiating team has been delaying and using divisive tactics to stall these negotiations even longer. These workers deserve a fair contract today. The fact that you all have an eleven percent vacancy rate should give you all real concern that there is real problems with moving with status quo. You are all just making it harder for those who remain to do their own jobs. You gotta fix this. Get these workers the wages and the resources that they need to do their job. This council's vision for the city of Richmond cannot happen without the people behind me. Give them the resources and respect to know that Richmond is the future. The Labor Council urges you to instruct your negotiating team to get back to the table, to negotiate in good faith, stop the delay tactics, and get a contract now. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last in-person speaker is Kevin Tisdale.
Thank you, mayor, city council. Kevin Tisdale, SEIU. So SEIU is out of contract, as you heard, fifty-six days. Its members did not take lightly taking a strike vote, which authorized by ninety-six percent to strike if necessary. Now, the necessary part is up to you. This decision was not made lightly. We know that the strike means that parks won't get maintained, mediums won't get cut, permits not approved, inspection's not done, community centers closed, vital programs don't function. This is not the decision we want to do or take. We want the workers to be respected and not ignored. Unfortunately, the city's negotiator has continued to delay talks and failed to bargain in good faith, so much so the SEIU has filed some perp charges, which the lawyers will handle, to illustrate negotiations were originally scheduled on August nineteenth. We agreed, they moved them to the twenty-seventh, the negotiator canceled twenty-seventh, suggested the twenty-ninth, he's not available on twenty-ninth, moved to the third, which was previously scheduled. Now, the third's not available. Now, the next date is September seventeenth. Thirty-two days between sessions is not acceptable. As you heard, from April to current, thirty-five proposals, only four responded to. What we're asking is simple. Come to the table with the proper authority, show that Richmond frontline workers, Richmond workers matter, right? We are here providing a service, and we even welcome you to the table. That's happened before. If a few of you want to come, observers, witness, we welcome that. We want this to be done, okay? Time is running out, and we're ready, and we're waiting. Our team is here, your team's here, we're ready. And also, the truth is that the resources are there. Reserves are at the highest level because of hiring freezes and making money off interest. This is not about, this is not about, excuse me, scarcity is about priorities. We want Richmond to be a city of choice, not last resort, and we need you to make that the choice for your employees. Again, thank you, and choose Richmond. Thank you.
Thank you.
What do we want? Do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
The country!
Do we want it?
Now!
Stand up. What do we want?
The country!
Do we want it?
Now!
Counsel, it's up to you. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your opinions with us, your thoughts. With that, we are adjourning to close session.
What do we want?
The country!
Do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
The country!
Do we want it?
Now!
We're ready, waiting on you.
[326.30]
We had a lot of things to work out at the last minute, but we're here now, 10 minutes late, but ready to start the special meeting for the Richmond Housing Authority. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, excuse me? Sir? Pledge of Allegiance.
We couldn't hear you.
Because you were talking. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Role call?
Okay, I have Commissioner Bana. Commissioner Bana is present in the room. Commissioner Brown will be absent the entire meeting. Commissioner Jimenez?
Presente.
Commissioner Robinson?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Vice Chair Cepeda?
Here.
Chair Martinez?
Here.
And Tenant Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Okay, the next item is Statement of Conflict of Interest. Are there any? Hearing none. The next item is Agenda Review. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. The next item is Housing Authority Open Forum. And we do have a speaker. That would be Cordell Handler.
So, good evening, Chair Martinez. Commissioners, for the record, Cordell Handler, a Richmond resident. So, I looked at the item on Consent Calendar, and I don't have no problem with this. So, it's up to you, Chair Martinez, to approve the consent calendar as presented by staff, and that's it.
Thank you. And I do see a handout for Zoom speakers. Ursula will call it the Zoom speaker.
The speaker is Musa Tariq, and you will have two minutes to address the Commissioners. You may go ahead.
Hi, is this the appropriate time to give public comment on item V2 around the Palestine resolution, or is that later?
That's later on that particular item.
Okay, for sure. Will that be during public comment or at the end?
No, during that item, which is V2.
Okay, for sure.
There are no more speakers.
Okay, the next item is the approval of the Housing Authority Consent Calendar. Do we have a motion to approve?
I motion that we approve it.
A second?
Okay, motion by Tenant Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Robinson. Commissioner Brown is absent. Commissioner Bana?
Here.
Um, yes, or no?
Yes, sorry. (laughing).
We had a lot of things to work out at the last minute, but we're here now, 10 minutes late, but ready to start the special meeting for the Richmond Housing Authority. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Excuse me? Sir? Pledge of Allegiance.
We couldn't hear you.
Because you were talking. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Real call?
Okay, I have Commissioner Bana. Commissioner Bana is present in the room. Commissioner Brown will be absent the entire meeting. Commissioner Jimenez?
Presente.
Commissioner Robinson?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Vice Chair Zapata?
Here.
Chair Martinez?
Here.
And Tenant Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Okay, the next item is Statement of Conflict of Interest. Are there any? Hearing none. The next item is Agenda Review. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. The next item is Housing Authority Open Forum, and we do have a speaker. That would be Cordell Handler.
So, good evening, Chair Martinez. Commissioners, for the record, Cordell Handler, a Richmond resident. So, I looked at the item on Consent Calendar, and I don't have no problem with this. So, it's up to you, Chair Martinez, to approve the consent calendar as presented by staff, and that's it.
Thank you, and I do see a handout for Zoom speakers. Ursula will call up the Zoom speaker.
The speaker is Musa Tariq, and you will have two minutes to address the commissioners. You may go ahead.
Hi, is this the appropriate time to give public comment on item V2 around the Palestine Resolution, or is that later?
That's later on that particular item.
Okay, for sure. Will that be during public comment or at the end?
No, during that item, which is V2.
Okay, for sure, thank you.
Okay. There are no more speakers.
Okay, the next item is the approval of the Housing Authority Consent Calendar. Do we have a motion to approve?
I motion that we approve it.
A second. Okay, motion by Tenant Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Robinson. Commissioner Brown is absent. Commissioner Bana?
Here.
Yes, or no?
Yes, sorry.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zapata?
Yes.
And Chair Martinez?
Yes.
And Tenant Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
And the item passes.
All right, with that, we will adjourn. Special thanks to Commissioner Scott for joining us. It's always a joy.
Have a good evening.
All right, it's now time for the regular meeting of the Richmond City Council. We have a real call.
Councilmember Bana?
Here.
Councilmember Brown will be absent the entire meeting. Councilmember Jimenez?
Presente.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Zapata?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
Here.
The next item is Statement of Conflict of Interest. Are there any? Hearing none. The next item is Agenda Review, and we do have a few changes. There is a correction to item U4D, which is, give me just one second. The Contract Amendment Number Two with Bay Marine Boatworks DBA's vendons Bay Marine for Repair and Maintenance Services. It's incorrectly listed as Amendment Number Two in the title. It should be Amendment Number One. The next thing on Agenda Review would be that item U8B has been withdrawn at the request of staff, and that item is to approve the purchase of replacement upper receivers for SWAT rifles from LC Action Policy Supply. And then, the last thing would be that the Clerk's Office would like to request that the council add an emergency item to the consent calendar. And this would be to approve the cancellation of the September 2nd, 2025 regular meeting. And the council would reconvene regular meetings on Tuesday, September 16, 2025. It came to the Clerk's attention yesterday that it was incorrectly scheduled. Usually, due to the council rules of procedure and order, the meetings in September should start the week following the first Tuesday, the Labor Holiday, but that's the holiday as well. So, if we are requesting that, it would start the 16th instead.
All right, so...
Do we have a motion for that?
Yes.
Yes. Motion by Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
A second?
A second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Martinez, seconded by Councilmember Bana. Councilmember Brown is absent. Councilmember Bana?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zapata?
Just to confirm, this is to add the item to the consent?
Yes.
Okay, all of them saying.
And Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes. The next item on the agenda is, just one second. The report from the city attorney on final decisions made during closed session.
With regards to the closed session agenda, there are three liability claims listed under C1, which are Caston, Hurtado, and Winn. Those three items were all discussed, and there was direction given to, for settlement negotiations concerning the last item listed under C1, which is Terminal 1 Development. That item was not discussed. We ran out of time. C2 was another item involving existing litigation, Doe versus City of Richmond. Again, settlement discussion was discussed, and direction was given for settlement negotiations. The C3 item involved labor negotiations. All the bargaining unit items were discussed. Direction was given to the negotiators on those separate items for, to continue negotiations, and there was no reportable action taken, just the direction for further negotiations. And that concludes the closed session report.
Okay, the next item would be the report from the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor Martinez, members of the Richmond City Council. The one thing that I would like to do this evening is to make sure to acknowledge the 20th anniversary of Hurricane Katrina. I want to note that the city of Richmond stands in solidarity with communities that have endured unmanageable loss and short extraordinary resilience. We honor the lives of those impacted and the lessons learned about preparedness, equity, and the strength of community. Richmond remains committed to building a future where all cities are better equipped to protect and uplift their residents in times of crisis. The 20th anniversary of Hurricane Katrina is on August 29th, and we want to just remember those that endured the great tragedy and those that unfortunately lost their lives. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is Open Forum. Open Forum is an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that remain on the consent calendar or items that are not on the agenda. And just as a reminder, item U8B was removed from the, well, withdrawn from the consent calendar. During open forum, dialogue between the council and the speaker is prohibited. Tonight, we have 12 in-person speakers. Anyone joining us online that wishes to address the council, please raise your hand at this time. We will start with the in-person speakers and then move to the online speakers. When your name is called, please come forward and line up behind the speaker podium. When you are called to address the council, state your name and your residence, city of residence is optional. Please terminate your address to the council when your time expires. Each speaker shall have up to two minutes to address the council. The city of Richmond welcomes your comments and requests that you present your remarks in a respectful and appropriate manner within the established two-minute time limit. The first group of speakers are Cordell Handler, Elaine Owang Jemot, Susan Owang Varela, Lou Chavez Jordan, and Anthony Mitchell. Cordell Handler?
That's me. So, good evening again, Mayor Martinez, council. For the record, Cordell Handler, I'm a Richmond resident. So, first, I do want to thank Vice Mayor Zapata for bringing this proclamation for Women's Equality Month. I say, I stand up for this proclamation because I have teenage nieces, and I'm trying to teach them how to be empowered. Why? Because they are young women, and I'm trying to teach them how to feel, you know, strong and independent. So, and I'm gonna leave you, I'm gonna start you with a quote from a song from Destiny Child, "They are independent women. They deserve equal rights." Equal rights. Because every time when there's opportunities out there, who do they give the position to? A guy who is more, who is well-qualified, but not a woman. And I said, "That's not fair." We're trying to, like, keep up with the times, so women should be treated the same way. Fairly and, fair and square. So, I want to thank you for that, Vice Mayor Zapata. But also, what I just submitted to you all was, like, executive coaching. Every month, I get an article from CPS Consulting, and I find their resources to be very helpful because we're trying to, like, you know, keep up with, you know, with sort of the trends that I see in Richmond. As far as I, you know, because I had to go back to their archives, and I came across the idea of the vacancy rates. Because if you recall at the, a couple of meetings back, I was looking at the data from where our city falls, like, you know, vacancy rates. I'm like, "This is unacceptable. We need more positions in, by departments because it's terrible. We're trying to keep up." So, I'm hoping that in the future, that we needed, we need to fill these positions. So, I'm in support of the items on consent from HR, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. The next speaker is Elaine Owang Jemot.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Owang Jemot. I'm concerned with the misconduct against the public, property owners, and occupants in this community, which includes a 300-feet notice from 3535 Morningside Drive, work site for a backup battery cabinet to be installed. Also, I am concerned with the safety of the children and citizens in Cheese Park next to 3535. The Richmond City Public Works Department approved and issued a permit on the scope of work proposal for the installation of a 42-new lithium battery backup cabinet for 3545 Morningside Drive. The Public Works Department has serious errors in the city's procedures, such as: One, they went against city ordinance 12.28220 on transfer of an approved permit that must be voided. Two, they broke a municipal code 12.30.110 regarding public notice needs to be sent out first before approving a permit. And three, they needed to notify the fire marshal for an escape plan for the community in case of any emergency with the backup battery unit emitting thermal runaway that is overheating, fire, or an explosion. If the backup battery explodes, a person walking in front of the sidewalk would be dead. Did the Public Works think about the legal liability putting it on the city of Richmond? I have signatures from the community opposing this work. It is very important that the approved permit must be voided now to prevent a plan of disaster, liabilities, and lawsuits.
Your time has expired, thank you. The next speaker is Susan Owang Varela.
Hello. My name is Susan Owang Varela, and I'm owner house and two blocks away from the Lamont's Park, also known as Cheese Park in Richmond. It's next to the 3535 Morningside Drive. And I'm concerned with the battery backup box that is being intended to be installed at the public right-of-way of 3535 Morningside Drive. My major concern is the people and the dogs who walk by 3535 Morningside Drive. They will get toxic exposures from the battery backup box. My husband and March Liberty had a building that they contracted, they caught cancer after an electronic box was placed on the outside of the office building. Therefore, I'm very fearful for everybody's safety under the law of the Proposition 65. We should be notified of the human hazards and the environmental hazards of the battery backup box. Again, where is the electrical studies on this site? I feel there must be safety standards for the community, our community. I don't want what happened to my husband, our March Liberty, which both contracted, contacted cancer, and that led to their death. The battery backup box may be a hazard to everyone in our community, particularly because it's next to the Cheese Park, where all the kids, babies, parents, dogs, dogs, the walkers, and the community centers across, and also, there's a nearby church, the Hilltop Church of Christ, and then, there's the school down the block, the Deansa High School, and the whole Bren Development. This is what I'm also concerned.
Your time has expired, ma'am.
Oh. Okay, sorry.
That's okay. The next person is Lou Chavez Jordan.
Hello. My name is Lou, and I'm here tonight to speak about community safety. Public Works must not be allowed to issue a public right-of-way permit until all official requirements are met. The public has the right to know the dangers to them, which would be disclosed with a copy of Prop 65. There is not one included in the scope of work originally done for 3545 Morningside Drive. There is no environmental study included, even though the site of 3535 has an underground creek, recently completed drainage work costing approximately $22,000 paid by property owners, and a storm drain in the gutter. The issue of catastrophe will affect the watershed, the wetlands, and the bay. You see, lithium batteries are prone to thermal runaway when their temperature reaches over 70 degrees, and then, they explode, causing gases and a chemical fire, which requires the fire department to send a hazmat team, which if the city had said something to the fire department, they would know that this is on the corner of 3535. The Richmond Fire Department Marshal was not consulted on this permit. There are many concerns how this project was approved to move forward with the work. The permit must be voided and a new site selected that is more suitable. I want everyone to watch the lithium battery thermal runaway on YouTube, and then you will understand the horror safety issues that face this community that is in the public right-of-way. I'm deeply concerned, as this does not belong near the sidewalk to a children's park that's next door. And there's also an issue in West Seneca.
Your time has expired, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Anthony Mitchell.
Hi, council. Good evening. Anthony Mitchell, Echo Green Solutions. Thank you for letting me come up before you guys this evening. I was here probably a couple of months ago. We were talking about the utility programs and the funds available to the city. I'm just circling back because we actually were working with Mr. Capistrano before he retired. We've conducted the audits. We were instructed to work with sustainability. We've been working with them as well. We are stuck at an intersection where there is an application packet that is being requested to be completed by the city. It's a non-binding application packet. It's non-financially binding. It's only information binding, and this will allow us to actually get the funds committed to you from the utility company. It doesn't lock you in, but at least it lets us to be able to get them to take a look at the work that we had done with Nick and the other folks in facilities to do the assessment on this campus. And so, we have met with planning, we've met with sustainability, we've met with Public Works, and also Facilities, and they're like, "We don't know who can sign this." So, I'm just here before you guys today. I have the packet here. It's non-financially binding. It's just a packet to tell PG&E that you guys are interested and see if they'll give you the money for the work that we had already done for you guys. Again, it's money that's no money out of pocket to the city. This is money that you're, the city pays every single month into this program, 10% every month. And so, we're just trying to get those funds back to the city, and this was just the pilot that we were doing, because we've already met with parks. They have a ton of facilities. Obviously, I'm sure you guys know how many parks, facilities you have. But basically, the original assessment, which is the heavy lifting, is done. And so, now it's just a matter of having the utility company review it, give you the money, and then come back to you to say, "Here's what it looks like," and at that point in time, you can decide if you want to take it or not, or sign the contract between you and PG&E. You're not bound. There's no obligation to do anything. You're not locked in. It's just a matter of having them release it to where we can at least finish our work to come back to you and say, "Here's what the contract looks like. Do you like this? Do you guys want to do more?" Or, do you want to just tell us to kick rocks, which we can do that too? But I'm here today just to ask because everybody's like, "I don't know who I can get this to sign," so usually it has to come to the board, so that's why I'm here, standing on board.
Your time has expired, sir.
And that's basically it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mahdi Khan, and the following group of speakers after that will be Amina Akbar, Amaya Diana, Diana Navarez, Monique Blodgett, Mark Wasberg, and Sohe La Bana. Mahdi Khan, if you'll come up to the podium?
Good evening, Richmond City Council. My name is Mahdi Khan, and I am a freshman at Contra Costa College. I am proud to be part of Richmond Youth Food Policy Council Initiative. I live in District 1, where 13.3% of our population lives with diabetes. This issue hits close to my home for me, because my dad is prediabetic. Watching him manage his dyscondition has made me more aware of our food choices. We have started checking labels for sugar and sodium content in nearly everything we consume, and it's clear that small changes can lead to significant differences. Making healthier choices can be difficult, especially at checkout lanes, which is why a healthy retail ordinance is essential. We are here to introduce our community about healthier options and foster a supportive environment. By passing this ordinance, we can empower individuals to make better choices and address critical health issues like diabetes. Together, we can make healthy options more accessible for everyone, ensuring a higher Together, we can make healthy options more accessible for everyone, ensuring a higher, a brighter future. I hope we can see this item up for, on the agenda soon. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amina Akbar.
Hello. Good evening, council members. My name is Amina. I'm a junior at Deanna's High School, and this is my third year as a HOPS advocate. And joining this program really changed my life. It opened my eyes to the main problem we have here in Richmond and in the Bay Area. No one, and no one pays attention to it. It affects half the people who don't understand what healthy ordinance is. If you care for your community, and if you care for younger children of this generation and the next, you'll take the step to make this community a better place. We hope, we hope you put us on the consent calendar to vote on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amaya.
Hello, city council members. My name is Amaya Jackson, and I go to Deanna's High School, and I'm a senior. Today, a couple months ago, we surveyed forty-eight students at Deanna's High School, and I wanted to tell you guys the results. So, out of the, out of the grades, eleven, eleven graders answered the most, and about seventy-three percent has lived in Richmond, the Richmond area for more than five years. We learned that seventy percent of respondents have a short drive distance to grocery stores, and around forty-two percent buy food or drinks from the checkout lines about once a month, while thirty-one percent purchase once a week. Items like chocolate, chocolate candy, chips, crackers, and dried meats and cheese are bought about once a month, while fruits or nuts are purchased, are purchased more frequently. And I'm going to be passing, I'm going to be passing the rest of the data to my colleague, D R Navarez.
Hello. Good evening. I'm D R Navarez, and I'm going to continue the data. So soft drinks are mo, are purchased the most about once a month. Energy drinks are the least purchased. Juice is the most purchased about once a month. Water is the most purchased most days, which is good. Seventy-two point nine percent said they regretted purchasing something from the checkout line. Forty-seven point nine percent said that they would purchase healthier snacks or drinks offered at the checkout lanes, while forty-five point eight percent they might. Out of forty-eight responses, sixty point four percent have someone in their family who has been diagnosed with type-two diabetes, high blood pressure, or hypertension, while twenty-two point nine percent said they are unsure. Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. The next speaker is Monique Blodgett.
All right. Good evening, Council. I want to thank you guys all for all the hard work you guys have done in this uncertain time. I know the country is going through a lot right now with a lot of division, but I appreciate you guys for paying attention to the youth and everything that they have done for all the past years that they have worked on this healthy retail project. I encourage you all to pay attention and really take your time to look at the report once you guys get it, and thoroughly read through it, and see all the work that they have put into this, the sweat, blood, and tears to actually make this come to fruition. I really appreciate you all again, and I hope that we can see this go forward and vote on this as soon as possible. Thank you all again, and enjoy your day.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mark Wasberg.
So far, we only had one homicide this year. This is the lowest ever within twenty-five years. And don't, don't believe the city council is going to come up here at the end of the year and say, oh, we did this, our programs did that. It's just a bunch of pack of lies. The Richmond PD did put a probably small dent in it, but it didn't do any good. I said, right now, or within fifteen years, you had double, triple side homicide rates among the black population. We know for a fact, you have two hun, you had two hundred and seventy-five homicides, and almost all of them, ninety-nine point nine percent was blacks killing blacks. I was there. I was with the police, I was with the gangsters, and I was with the ministers stopping this stuff. So if you think you're going to come up here and preach a bunch of lies like that Nazi McLaughlin did, had a list about this long, saying, oh, our nonprofit did that, don't, don't believe in people. It's all a bunch of political garbage, because none of you people were there during that time. And matter of fact, Robinson, you could give me the million dollars, because I just told you what's happening with the black population, why they are disappearing. Go to Verdi School. Seventy-five percent Latino. Thirty, forty, fifty years ago, it was a hundred percent black. I go down to North Richmond, who I see a bunch of illegal immigrants from Mexico standing in food lines. I might see one black person there. And the black population is not going to recover. They're done. And, and like I say, they're running out of people to kill. All, all the gangsters are gone. They didn't kill each other out there. Now they're moving up to Vallejo and Antioch and starting trouble out there. So you need to do, you need to do your research.
Next speaker is Sohe La Bana.
I'm Sohe La Bana, representing District Four. I wanted to thank the residents who brought the issue of lithium battery installation on the sidewalk to our attention. I'm concerned about it, too. I'm sorry I didn't know about it earlier. Nobody informed me, and I have asked the city manager in the future to inform us about every project that goes on in our districts, and I will do my best to address it. But the reason why I'm here is that residents in Richmond District Four, as well as residents in El Sobrante, and many other residents in West Contra Costa County have been organizing a peaceful demonstration on Labor Day. That's on Monday from eleven AM to one PM for workers over billionaires. It's a Labor Day kickoff peaceful demonstration. You're all invited. The location is San Pablo Dam Road and Appian Way, again, Monday, September first, from eleven AM to one PM. Among the demands to build the society we all deserve include the stop the billionaire takeover and rampant corruption, protect and defend Medicaid, Social Security, and other programs for working people, fully fund the schools, and healthcare and housing for all, stop the attacks on immigrants, black, black indigenous LGBTQ plus people, and all our communities, invest in people, not wars. Unfortunately, I'll be traveling and will miss it, but I'm sure it will be a good demonstration, and hope you all can join. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move to the Zoom speakers. Ursula, if you can call them.
The speakers are Tim James and Melvin Willis. You will each have up to two minutes to speak, and Tim James, you may begin.
Council members, Tim James, on behalf of the California Grocers Association, we very much appreciate the city making this update public and the effort that has gone into its preparation of this report regarding a healthy checkout proposal. Understanding that this directly impacts brochures and their operations, we believe it's critical the city work directly with impacted grocers and retailers. We look forward to discussions with each council member and city staff to ensure the potential proposal is fully understood, and the city receives grocer input directly from the appropriate retail representatives in order to avoid any misinformation or miscommunication. I'm sure you will all agree the best policy comes from education, engagement, and ensuring all voices are recognized and heard. Brochures need a full seat at the table. We look forward to being part of this process going forward, and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melvin Willis. Melvin, you may begin.
Hello, Richmond City Council and Mayor, Melvin Willis, Richmond resident. First, I did want to thank the mayor for the appointment to the Richmond Rent Board, and of course, it still needs to be ratified after the consent calendar, but do want to express my appreciation. I've been working with tenants for a very long time and been having to, like, give out information to those who don't even know about the rent program for years, and even still coming across people who don't fully understand how it works, and I look forward to being a part of that, to just completely expand on ways we can get information out there to people, so everybody who interacts with the rent program can know their rights. And also, just to support our Richmond youth that just spoke, I just wanted to add to the information that they were giving that recently, just sharing some personal information, I have had to make sure that when I'm going out to the grocery store that I am getting healthier options for myself, because I would just not keep a well-stocked pantry, would have to go to the corner store, and the only thing available for me is beef Slim Jim, some energy drinks, and a Butterfinger as a snack. There really isn't any other options, and because I have made more of an intentional effort to make sure I'm not going out as much, I'm starting to feel better, but I do wish I had more healthier and affordable options around me, so I don't have to travel miles just to get healthy produce and everything. So do want to support our youth, however you guys go about that ordinance. It is important to realize that we are in a food desert, and we do deserve better. We do deserve healthier options in front of us as opposed to literally eating things that aren't really giving us the full nutritional value and energy that we need to get through the day. But I just want to say thank you all for all the work you do. Stay positive, and appreciate y'all.
Thank you. And that was our last public speaker.
Okay. The next item is the approval of the consent calendar, and just as a reminder, item U eight B was withdrawn, and that would be to approve the purchase of replacement upper receivers for SWAT rifles from LC Action Policy Supply. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Wilson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Vice Mayor Sepeda Brown. Councilmember Brown is absent. Councilmember Bana?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sepeda?
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
And the motion passes. The next item is item V one, which is to receive a presentation to ban land grabs in Richmond, protect housing communities, and the future from the Sustainable Economies Law Center.
Thank you. May I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Last week, the council approved the equity transfer of the Marina lease from Safe Harbors Marinas to Brookfield Infrastructure Partners, with operations continuing under Safe Harbors Marinas for the remainder of the region all fifty-five years. I feel like we didn't have much option but to approve it, but there are other cases, but we do have option and choice. So it's important to recognize whom we are dealing with when it comes to housing. Blackstone Inc. is the world's largest alternative asset manager overseeing more than one trillion dollars in assets. Blackstone, sorry, I said Blackfield earlier, is Blackstone operates through two powerful arms. One is real estate, which is the housing arm. This division controls tens of thousands of single-family rental homes. Blackstone was an early pioneer in institutional, single-family residential market, and they own more than eighty thousand single-family residential properties. In recent years, they acquired Home Partners of America, who owns tens of thousands of more across the United States. So while they invest in multifamily, they also invade, invest in single-family residential properties. The other arm is infrastr, infrastructure arm, which is Blackstone Infrastructure Partners, who is into digital infrastructure, energy, and transportation, and they reached nearly fifty-five billion dollars assets by the end of last year. So they started purchasing single-family residential properties, mostly in the Sunbelt Estates like Florida, Georgia, Texas, and Arizona, and we don't want them to come to California. So we are going to protect ourselves in the city of Richmond, and hopefully other cities follow suit, and protect themselves against these investors who already have over five-hundred-seventy-four-thousand single-family residential, for example, just in the state of Texas. Because we cannot allow the housing arm, arm of Blackstone and other corporations grab our homes, we would like to discuss the options of limiting their ownership of single-family residential. So, because when corporations scoop up housing stock, neighborhoods lose stability, rents rise, and the dream of homeownership slips further away. Housing is not just a commodity, it is a human right. So my intention of introducing this item is to limit the purchase of existing single-family residential properties, and I'm greatly thankful and grateful to this wonderful team. I'm going to introduce them, and please take seats over here for your presentation. We have Mo Mukim, Hope Williams, Hasmik Gagamian, and Tobias Domlur. Thank you so much to these attorneys from Sustainable Economies Law Center. They're here to share their general view with us, receive our feedback and comments, and then hopefully bring back a draft ordinance to this council in a couple of months. Please, thank you. K C R T, could you start the, thank you.
Oh, great. Hello. Yes, so just want to first start off by thank you so much for your leadership. We deeply, deeply appreciated your willingness from May's last meeting to hear from ACE members on this important issue, even after a very long evening. I also want to acknowledge the community members who showed up online. We're grateful now for the opportunity to share today. We're here today because of the leadership that the, the city has shown time and time again in standing up for equity, justice, and community self-determination. For fifteen years, our Law Center's work has been shaped by the communities we stand alongside, especially those committed to collective liberation and economic justice. We're honored to be in conversation with Richmond organizations like ACE and Communities for a Better Environment, learning from those who have been leading the fight for housing justice and resisting displacement. Oh, I think I'm two slides behind, so sorry. Through our research, we know in California, fewer than one in five households can now afford to purchase a median-priced home. In Richmond, the pressure is especially intense, where median rents have more than doubled since two thousand, and near- And thank you, Councilmember Bana. My name is Hope Williams. My pronouns are she/her. I work with the Sustainable Economies Law Center, and I am their Director of Legislative Advocacy.
I'm Mo Mukim. I'm a land and housing justice attorney at the Sustainable Economies Law Center.
Good evening, Mayor Martinez and council members. My name is Hasmik Gegamian, and I'm also a staff attorney at the law center.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tobias Domlur. I'm also a staff attorney at the Sustainable Economies Law Center.
Thank you very much for coming. KCRT, could you please start the...? Thank you.
Oh, great. Hello. Yes, so just want to first start off by thank you so much for your leadership. We deeply, deeply appreciated your willingness from May's last meeting to hear from ACE members on this important issue, even after a very long evening. I also want to acknowledge the community members who showed up online. We're grateful now for the opportunity to share today. We're here today because of the leadership that the city has shown time and time again in standing up for equity, justice, and community self-determination. For fifteen years, our law center's work has been shaped by the communities we stand alongside, especially those committed to collective liberation and economic justice. We're honored to be in conversation with Richmond organizations like ACE and Communities for a Better Environment, learning from those who've been leading the fight for housing justice and resisting displacement. Oh, I think I'm two slides behind, so sorry. Through our research, we know in California, fewer than one in five households can now afford to purchase a median-priced home. In Richmond, the pressure is especially intense, where median rents have more than doubled since 2000, and nearly half of all households are cost-burdened. That is a crisis. And this trend, if unchecked, will continue to reshape who gets to live and thrive here. Because as of now, over one thousand single-family homes in Richmond are owned by corporations. Next slide. And we feel this study is timely and urgent, and our hope today is simply to offer information that may be helpful if the council decides to move this forward. The city is long-led with courage and care. And if you, the representatives of the city of Richmond, choose to pursue this path, you could shape a model for cities across California. Thank you again for your time.
Yes, thank you for your leadership on housing issues. As you may know... Oh, next slide, please. As you may know, skyrocketing housing costs drive racialized displacement in Richmond. The median home price increased three hundred and sixteen percent from nineteen ninety to twenty twenty. And for renters who make up forty-nine percent of Richmond's population right now, median gross rents have more than doubled from 2000 to 2020. Next slide. This increase was driven in part by more homes being owned by absentee investors, which is where people or businesses buy up homes for the sole purpose of selling them at a profit. Investor owners have also been shown to increase rent at sixty percent higher rates than average. This also caused racialized displacement, for example, cutting Richmond's black population in half since the year 2000. And it has led to nearly fifty percent of Richmond's household being cost-burdened, having to pay a third or more of their income for housing.
Next slide, please. And one more. Legislation countering housing speculation has gained momentum in recent years. And there's some good news, the city can buck these trends. Next slide. Senator Skinner's 2024 SB 1212 worked to prevent investment entities from purchasing, acquiring, or leasing a single-family home or duplex. And then in 2022, US Rep. O'Connor introduced the Stop Wall Street Landlords Act to tax institutional investments in single-family homes. Unfortunately, none of these legislations have passed. However, this year, Assemblymember Lee's AB 1240 looks to prevent business entities that have interest in more than one thousand single-family homes from obtaining an ownership interest in more single-family residences. This legislation is now pending in a Senate Judiciary Committee. Even if AB 1240 passes statewide, the bill is very narrow compared to the speed and the scale of corporate land grabs underway in Richmond and across the Bay Area. It only covers single-family homes, sets high thresholds, invites easy workarounds, and relies on weak enforcement. With weak renter protections, no speculation tax, no support or first-right tools for community ownership, it's unlikely to meaningfully change outcomes underground in Richmond. Thank you so much for receiving this presentation, and we look forward to working with you on, hopefully, the ordinance, and back to Mo.
Next slide, please. Thank you to my coworkers for setting the stage for this policy, and thank you so much, council and the mayor, for your consideration and interest in this proposal. I'll walk through the details of our proposal. It's quite simple. Our proposal is for Richmond to ban for-profit corporations from purchasing housing. Corporate speculators are not serving us, and the city has the power to stop them from treating our homes and communities like financial assets. We advocate for a proposal that creates a streamlined list of entities that are able to purchase housing in Richmond. The list would be the four entities named on the slide, nonprofits, limited equity cooperatives, public entities, and people would be allowed to purchase housing. This list captures the range of actors we envision in a future of social housing for all. Everyday people can own their homes along with community-oriented nonprofits and resident-owned cooperatives. If an entity is not on this list, say they're a corporation, faceless LLC, or hedge fund, then they should not be allowed to purchase single-family homes in Richmond. There are two caveats we also want to name. First, this ordinance would not be forcing anyone to sell their real estate. It would be a forward-looking ban prohibiting entities not on this list from purchasing homes in the future. Second, as Councilmember Bana laid out, the scope of this ordinance would be to apply to single-family homes up to fourplexes. We think this reflects the common sense notion that the stock of single-family homes, duplexes, and fourplexes should be owned by families and community-oriented organizations, not Wall Street or wealthy corporations. Tailoring the ordinance to apply to existing single-family homes alleviates the potential concern that this ordinance could inhibit new development. And so it may not be necessary to include the carve-out named on the slide, which is that corporations, for-profit corporations, could buy housing if they're building new units of permanently affordable housing. This is an area of live discussion for us and our partners, which reflects that this is a draft policy which we have developed over the last year of research and discussion with council members and community partners. Next slide, please. We think this policy is a much-needed first step to curb the financialization of housing in Richmond, stabilize communities, and move us towards housing being treated like a human right rather than a commodity. We are proud to have received endorsements from ACE, Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment, and Communities for a Better Environment on this policy. Next slide, please. Thank you. Thank you again for listening, and we look forward to your questions and discussions this evening as we work towards making this common sense policy a reality.
Thank you. I think we'll go to speakers.
We do have one in-person speaker. It's Mohit Mukim.
Hello, I'm here to read a public comment on behalf of an organizer at Communities for a Better Environment, Martine Johansson. The comment is, "I work at Communities for a Better Environment here in Richmond, and I normally attend city council meetings to speak about the harms of large polluting corporations on the city and its residents. I'm disappointed to miss tonight's meeting because I'm extremely inspired by this proposal to tackle the harms that a different set of large corporations are enacting in Richmond, the real estate developers, private equity firms, and bad actors that infiltrate the city's housing market, extract community wealth, and impede community stewardship of this land. Richmond residents deserve to have access to high-quality, affordable housing, and rest assured that they'll be able to stay in their homes, not displaced when large corporations see these homes as a profitable commodity. This proposal is a practical and creative step to help make housing stable, affordable, and accessible. Thinking proactively about the impacts of corporate real estate actors is particularly critical right now, given the city council's expressed interest in transitioning Richmond towards a clean economy, upgrading city infrastructure, and cleaning up toxic sites. Corporations often swoop in during these sorts of green transformations, scooping up properties cheaply and displacing longtime residents. It just makes sense to be proactive and start thinking now about how to protect Richmond residents from possible harm. I hope that city council will support further research on banning corporate land grabs and restricting the number of properties any entity can own. Richmond can be inspiring example for other cities across California and beyond on how to protect working-class communities of color from corporate greed and gentrification by enabling community ownership and keeping residents..."
Your time has expired. Thank you. And I don't see any Zoom speakers.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank you for bringing this back, and I'm sorry that we weren't able to get into it the last time that you brought it. But I still have the documents that you provided us last time, which are more thorough than the presentation that you made today. So would you like to... Well, my question is, in the legal analysis, and I know that you're all for lawyers, how does this protect the city from the concept of taking?
I can respond to that. This ordinance, proposed ordinance, will limit future acquisitions by large entities. And courts uphold regulations that reduce speculative profit when serving a legitimate public interest, which is this. So property owners retain the right to rent, use, and sell their existing homes. There's no unconstitutional taking here. And I guess one other thing I would say is this is under rational basis review, under due process and equal protection clause. So corporations don't have a constitutional right to buy unlimited homes, and the ordinance treats all corporate actors equally and serves, at the same time, serves a clear public interest, which is to prevent displacement and speculation. So it passes the rational basis review.
Good, thank you. And in the cannabis world, corporations are using individuals to purchase rights to distribution. So does your ordinance contain any provisions to keep that from happening in terms of housing?
I didn't understand the question. May I answer?
Councilmember Bana wants to speak to that.
Well, we're talking about big corporations. It's not worth it for big corporations to go through individuals. That's not how they work. It's usually an entity, they may change names, and actually, those are some of the things we would like to discuss here, like how do you limit the ownership of housing, single-family residential properties by corporation? Should the limit be three, five, ten? Could like ten different corporations come, and each of them buy some or hundred corporations? Or should we have additional limit, like in the entire city of Richmond, no more than five percent, or three percent, or ten percent of housing stocks being owned by them? These are the questions we need to discuss. But usually, it's nearly impossible for a corporation to hide under a real person to purchase property. And we'd like to emphasize that real people, like individuals who own additional homes, is perfectly okay. We just don't want to have big corporations to come in. And we'd like to put the limit for everyone. Those who already have ten, twenty properties, fine. Nobody touches them. But from now on, the title companies, when they ratify the contract, they should look at the buyer's history to see how many properties they own in the city of Richmond.
Yeah, and just to add to that, one of the reasons that we are advocating to have a limit on the number of properties that a person can own too is to prevent exactly the issue that you're talking about, where somebody operates as a mega landlord, owning dozens of properties throughout Richmond, not out of their LLC like they're using now, or a shell of LLCs, but just outright, like, taking title in their own name to dozens of property in Richmond. So we are... Yeah, we look forward to working with the city on agreeing on what number exactly would make sense for the maximum number of properties a person can own in their own name. But that's definitely a feature of the policy as we drafted it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
Great. So I have a lot of questions. One, I want to say that we're all looking for solutions when it comes to housing, but we want to have good solutions, right? Solutions that don't cause more problems. So I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. It sounds like, if I'm understanding you correctly, that you're proposing that not the people who currently own multiple properties, but anyone in the future who would like to own multiple properties will be banned from owning multiple properties, that being... Having a business that is renting homes will basically be outlawed in Richmond?
Yeah, so we are trying to keep mom-and-pop landlords, allow them to continue to exist. And so that's the limit that we were just talking about. Like, let's say we want a person to be able to own five homes, and that's like our definition of a mom-and-pop landlord, if you own five homes or less. And then if you own six homes already, if this ordinance were to pass, then you would be above the threshold for a mom-and-pop landlord, and so you can't buy your sixth home. And so that's, yeah, that's basically the...
So what if a family has a trust? And they've been putting, when people pass away, they've been putting houses into that trust? If someone passes away and it's the sixth person, they wouldn't be able to put that family house into that trust?
Yeah, it sounds like... So yeah, right now, we do allow trusts to own property as long as the beneficiaries are people and not a corporation or a hedge fund, for example. But the situation you're describing sounds like one where multiple people are owning multiple properties together, like a family trust arrangement. And that's definitely a nuance that we'd have to kind of spend more time parsing out with the city attorney.
So what I'm seeing, and I'm also reading here, is that the language says that there are certain entities that wouldn't be allowed. So if I was a mom-and-pop and I was using the entity of an LLC for my mom-and-pop business, that wouldn't be allowed. As an entity, I wouldn't be allowed, even though I'm just Mary Jo who owns three properties.
Yeah, I mean, I think right now, our idea would be, if there's a feasible way to distinguish, like, if there is an easy way for the title company or whoever's enforcing this ban to be able to tell that this LLC or certify is owned by a person, it's a single-owner LLC that's owned by a natural person, then perhaps it would make sense to allow them to use that LLC to operate their landlord business.
These are really like initial proposals. We're still have a lot of figuring out to do.
Yeah, the LLC question is just very complicated because it's very hard to tell. Right now, each LLC, like for hedge funds or corporations that are doing these real estate transactions, in general, it's one LLC per property. So it doesn't make sense to say, like, oh, we want to limit a corporation to just one home because right now, each corporation has just one home. It's just that they're owned by a parent company that's the same. So basically, sorry, this is a rabbit hole, but that the task of distinguishing LLCs from like when they're corporate-owned and when they're owned by people or nonprofit or cooperative, basically, we would need to like figure out exactly...
It sounds like more work you're doing. So the last question I have is just really, I'm wondering how prevalent this is in Richmond? Do we know how many multiple or corporate owners... How much of our housing stock of single-family homes up to fourplexes are owned by corporate? Or, you know, what is the prevalence of this issue in Richmond?
One thousand out of thirty thousand?
One thousand residences out of the thirty thousand residents are owned by a corporation?
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Councilmember.
I just want to add one more thing to your question, Councilmember Robinson. There was a legislation back in 2023, 2024 called SB 1201, and that was an attempt to address, like, bring more transparency to LLC ownerships, like adding beneficial ownership. But unfortunately, it failed in the first chamber in the Senate. We're hoping it'll be reintroduced. I think that's like, this is an issue that's at a state level they're trying to address as well, in terms of like, who owns what. And then, yeah, the LLC. You know, there are many people who get together and create an LLC, whether a family or a cooperative, that's operated as an LLC, and we do want to address that in this ordinance.
Right. I mean, there's a lot of complexities oftentimes that LLCs are used because of other issues that make it impossible for people to hold a cooperative or a nonprofit. that make it impossible for people to hold a cooperative or a nonprofit. Yeah, I have some worries. And, and I don't like, you know, kind of driving up housing costs that people can't afford to, to live in their homes. So I just wonder what the next steps are. And, yeah, thank you, though.
Councilmember Wilson?
Um, I agree with Councilmember Robinson. I think we're all interested in controlling housing costs and creating more affordable housing. I'm not quite convinced yet that this is the right pathway to it, but I'm glad to have a chance to, you know, we've, we've talked before, and I'm glad to have a chance to, to ask a few more questions. Just to clarify, the statistic of 1,000 out of 30,000 residences are corporate owned in Richmond right now, is that single family residences or all types of residences, including condos and apartments and things like that?
Single family residences, I think, yeah.
So my question, sort of following up with that, is that, how does that compare to sort of the national average? Like, or what's, I, I know you gave some statistics, but like, is 3% considered a very high rate of corporate ownership of single family homes?
I think that information might be in our report, but we, yeah, we can definitely follow up.
Because I, like, the little bit I've reading I've done about it, I know there's some communities that have like 25%, you know, because, but my understanding is it's a specific constellation of low housing prices and, and rapidly expanding, you know, population sizes, et cetera. Do you have the number of what the...
I, I have the report here. It says between 2005 and 2008, during the housing crisis, foreclosures in Richmond increased by more than 600%.
Different, that's a different statistic. I was looking for the number of corporate, it's okay, I don't, we can go, but I was looking for the number of corporate owned homes, which they, they said is 1,000, and that's 3% out of the 30,000. And is that a high number or low number? My sense is that, you know, just sort of getting to where I'm going, is that, my sense is that this is not really yet a huge crisis in California or the Bay Area or Richmond, which doesn't mean that we shouldn't get ahead of it. You know, maybe what we can think of this as, is an opportunity to put certain safeguards in place so that we don't have some kind of situation. But that said, like, I want to push back a little bit and, and sort of counsel caution on this, is that both the presentation and the agenda report are like, they have statements, like, I'll just read from the agenda report. The city of Richmond faces rising housing cost displacement and reduced community stability due to the increasing acquisition of residential properties by for-profit corporations and investors. I would argue that we have that problem not because of acquisitions by investors, there are other forces at play that have driven up our, both our rental prices and the, the price of owning a home. And so I'm a, you know, I'm a social scientist by training, and so I want to be real careful about cause and effect statements, because as policymakers, we only have so many resources and so much time. And so we don't, we want to be real clear on what the cause of our increasing housing prices are, so that we can really focus on just the, the solutions for it that address those causes. And to this moment, I don't think you've provided evidence that it's the corporate ownership that really put us in the unaffordable situation we are now. So I just kind of want to caution a little bit, if you have some...
Oh, Councilmember Wilson, I'm so sorry, I pulled up our report. It's been a while since I've read the whole thing. So thank you for that. But the quick statistic that comes up for me on the report is that institutional investors may control 40% of the U.S. single family rental homes by 2030.
Okay.
As just a general nod to possibly part of what it is that you're referencing.
Yeah, again, like, no, no problem getting ahead of it, but again, I don't think we have the quite constellation of forces that puts us on that trajectory. And I certainly don't think our high housing and rental prices are as a result of our, of corporate ownership so far in the past. And so again, just want to be really careful about that. The, you know, there might be other things that we would be smarter to work on in order to, to raise, including having more robust rent control that applies to single family homes, which would be a statewide policy that, that we've tried and it's failed, unfortunately. The other thing I sort of wanted to kind of kick the tires on a little bit is that I'm hearing, so when Councilmember Bana presented her position tonight, sort of like, I invited them here, and she spoke, I think, and you could, please tell me if I'm mischaracterizing this, please, Councilmember Bana, she talked really about banning corporate ownership of single family homes, which, by the way, I agree. I actually love the idea of banning corporate ownership of single family homes. But then, in your presentation, and I'm paraphrasing, I think you said that that's inadequate, that it's not enough to ban corporate ownership of single family homes. We need to, you know, ban corporate ownership of housing, period, which includes things like apartment buildings, et cetera, et cetera. Like, a much, it seems like your, your, your policy recommendation is, is broader than what Councilmember Bana sort of brought you here tonight to do. And so I just, I just want to see what, what we're actually talking about, because I, what my concern is, is you might, people might not be quite clear what we're getting behind when we get behind things. So can you talk more about the distinction between banning corporate ownership of single family houses versus banning corporate ownership of houses?
Yeah. So I, I mentioned that the policy would be tailored to banning corporate ownership of single family homes duplexes up to fourplexes. And I think that tracks a state and city level distinction between, like, the general category of single family homes and smaller residences and, versus larger apartment and multifamily buildings. So, yeah, the, the proposal is narrow, narrowed to, uh, single family homes to fourplexes is our current proposal.
Okay, that helps me. Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Vice Minister Zapata?
Thank you so much. Thank you for this presentation. I, I too, kind of heard something different, and I'm trying to catch up with the presentation, because out there, we do hear that corporations are buying up homes and making them more expensive, right? That talking point is out there. My question also goes to, how do we, where do we define corporations? Right? I think they were looking at the really big ones. Are we going to put a cap or a threshold to say, you're, you're a big bad corporation if you make above these? And not below this? Because, as was mentioned before, you could be an LLC, you could be a small mom and pop shop with the, as a corporation, because you want to protect yourself. So you create a corporation to buy one or two homes. Now are we saying, because you created a corporation to protect yourself, you can no longer, you're no longer allowed? Are we putting a threshold? I guess that's my first question.
No way. So, yeah, the, the current policy kind of gets around the question of how exactly do you find the bad actors? Because we instead just define the good actors. And so it creates a list of the entities that we do think should be able to own housing, which is people, nonprofits, cooperatives, and the government. And, yeah, and you could allow them to own those four entities, as long as they're the beneficial owners, could own it through a trust or an LLC or directly. But the, those would be the permitted entities, and then, and if you don't meet those criteria, then you're not permitted.
And then what will be the number that we're looking at for multiple properties? Is that, once you own four, you can't own anymore? Is it three?
We proposed four in our ordinance, but that's, yeah, I mean, that's our current proposal and could be something we discuss further. I also just wanted to briefly add, I remembered a statistic that I'd heard about Alameda County, which is that a quarter of the homes in Alameda County, this is something Nikki Bass was talking about, are owned by corporations. And so obviously, we're in Contra Costa County, but that, that was a couple years ago, and just the, the way that gentrification is, you know, spreading throughout the region is like, that, that could very well be where Richmond is in a few years, if, without a policy like this. And the other piece of our presentation named that 26% of the most affordable homes in the country nationwide, at the end of 2023, were being bought by corporations. So just that, just to emphasize that it is definitely like a, a nationwide and Bay Area issue right now. Yeah.
And then how would we, thank you for that. How would we work with individuals who own, let's say, four properties now? And are they going to be grandfathered? Or let's say they own five, are they going to be grandfathered? And then we're kind of creating inequity as well. Home ownership, what provides to individuals is the ability to create equity for life, right? You could pass that on to your kids, your grandkids. That's something you leave them. And now, if you're limited to it, then you can't leave them anything behind. And our community has a lot of black and brown communities that have been trying to build that equity. So what do we, how do we tackle that?
I, um, these questions have already been asked and answered, and I, I don't understand why you have to do it again.
I don't think they've been answered to what I, the same thing that I was asking. So equity for, if you're leaving your kids a property, if you've worked hard to buy homes, and we know that black and brown communities have the most issues buying and achieving homeownership, and if they're able to get two, three, four homes, now you can't potentially give that wealth back to your kids, if you're trying to buy more than four. So that's my question there. And in Richmond, what you were mentioning is one, 1,030, and, and every 30,000 is, did I get the numbers right? So Richmond has 25,000, approximately 25,000 single family homes. So it's, will be about less than, less than 1,000. Right? That's the, the number that is, that shows up for me when I, when I look it up, is we have about 25,000. Total, we have 42,000 residential properties in Richmond. Right? So it's a little bit above that threshold. So just trying to figure out again, what are we trying to, we're not quite there yet for the numbers, and it's such low. And then who would enforce? How would we go about that enforcement mechanism to show, are they, are we going to be asking all their taxes? Are we figuring out where other, where else in the country they may own? Like, what, how does the city then enforce that?
Yeah, just to clear up a few, so you asked about grandfathering as well. Because this ordinance isn't forcing anyone to sell their existing property, yeah, somebody who has five or six properties doesn't have to, they're, they're just fine, they just can't buy another one. As far as passing down to kids, yeah, I think the, the way we've drafted it now, you know, it could be that your spouse owns four, your kid owns four, your other kid owns four, like, that is, that would be allowed. So that's, that's the piece about grandfathering and passing down equity. And, sorry, your question just now was about enforcement. Yeah, so this is kind of an, an interesting piece for us to be working on, because we are land use and, like, real estate attorneys as well, or do work in that field. And so one, the, yeah, one proposal would be to have the, the title, the, sorry, the assessor's office and the title company, I guess, working to ensure that deeds are conforming to this ordinance. And so it would basically be that the ord, the, the deed when a title is taken to a prop, top, to a single family home in Richmond includes a certification that they are a conforming entity, they are on the eligible list of entities, and they qualify as a purchaser. And so basically, the, the deed would only be valid if that were true. And so if somebody wanted to lie and say, oh, I am eligible, but they're not, they would have a invalid deed to a property, which would be a huge liability. So that's the current enforcement mechanism.
Perfect. No other question for now, then. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Bana?
Thank you. I would like to explain the intention behind this. So some of you may remember the sign by, we buy ugly homes. Then ProPublica published something, and you don't see that sign as often. What they do, they come with cash and buy quickly at a lower price. And we're talking about large scale. We're not talking about two, three, four, we set the number. We can set the number at 10, 20, 30, whatever number we think is reasonable. So I hold a real estate license, and I receive three, four text messages a day. We buy fixer or distressed properties in cash. What are they doing? They're just coming to the market, outbidding hometown, or first time home buyers who can put down only 3.5%, 5%, 10%, 20%. They're buying cash. And it's not just investors, we also have foreign investors. And if there's a recession and threat of foreclosures, they come in and just scoop up properties. We would like to put a cap on that. We cannot prevent it, but we'd like to do the best we can. No large scale ownership of big corporations. We're not talking about mom and pop, we're not talking about families. Real estate is for building generational wealth, and we promote it for our residents. And we can have even exceptions for Richmond residents. Enforcement is another issue the team will be working on. I mean, it's a very complex issue to answer all the questions. They are here to hear you, to see if they should spend their time working very hard on bringing a feasible ordinance. So we are grateful to hear your doubts, questions, concerns. It's awesome. Please share all of them. But the fact is that we're not talking about, you know, just mom and pop, or it's about big corporation owning. And as I told you, it hasn't started in the East Coast and Sunbelt Estates, it hasn't reached California yet to that scale. But I personally do see investors at a scale that takes me three, four times a day, looking for distressed properties. That, that's why I brought, reached that to them and said, we should stop this. And just for your information, in real estate, there are two categories, a single family and multifamily. Single family category is one to four units, multifamily is five and up. And how it's enforced, it can, in my view, be easily enforced at the title company, either by verifying their ownership or having them sign something that they are not a hedge fund, or they are not a for-profit corporation to sign, so they can purchase the property. So please, share your other questions, so they know if, you know, what, what aspects of it are most important to you. And share your thoughts about the practical number. What is it? Five, 10, 20 properties? Or a percentage of the total number of single family residentials in Richmond, like, no more than 10% or 5% or 20%? Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
I don't want to waste too much more time asking all these questions, but it's, it's an interesting topic. I keep thinking that, you know, those signs or those advertisements, and I get them, you know, my family has a family trust, that we have houses for people that have passed on, go into the family trust, and it's managed by the family members. And so for, the first thing that came to mind was, you know, this has been the way that we've actually had these places for people to stay when they don't have a job, when they, you know, whatever, they can move into the 17th Street House, or they can move into the 12th Street House or whatever, and stay there. And so I do worry, because that is, you know, a different entity. It's, I would worry that if one of the other elders passes away, that we would not be able to put their house into that trust. And, you know, I think this is a key strategy that has helped my family stabilize people who are unstable and keep them housed. So I just wanted to bring that up. And then, it, it's just in terms of the folks that are using these methods to swoop, swoop up properties, I do wonder how many of them actually are holding properties in Richmond? And, and are they really coming in and maybe have one property, flip it, and then they don't have five, 10 properties at any one time, you know? Maybe over the course of a period of time, maybe they've had five or 10 properties, but I wonder how many they have at any one time, and wonder if that's even a, a measure that could actually isolate the problem? And then I, I have serious worries about the whole LLC, because I know quite intimately how, how many different types of people use that LLC in order to be able to hold property in the United States. And to outlaw it, it would, would be difficult, you know? And, and then, you know, people, you know, create corporations to protect themselves so they can run, you know, this kind of small businesses. So I wonder if there's some other way to get at the phenomena without, you know, creating a lot of problems in places that we don't want, want to. I, I like, I wonder about, you know, percentage of, of, of residential stock, or I wonder about a license, you know, for corporations, you know, so that we can track how many houses they have at any one time. I wonder if there's another way of, of monitoring... I wonder if there's another way of, of monitoring and, and putting in place an enforcement, if needed, besides an outright ban?
Yeah, I just want to, I want to just appreciate and thank you for sharing about your own family situation, and I think that's actually a really helpful data point that we weren't aware of, that is, in my mind, not super hard to work into our current ordinance draft. So for example, having, you know, the one, let's say it was four properties per person, and that same ratio applies to a trust or an LLC that multiple people own, or are the beneficial owners of. And so as long as, if there are six family members, as long as they don't have more than 24 properties.
I mean, I think you're thinking in nuclear families. This, you know, I come from a family that had initially six siblings, those six siblings have 72 grandchildren.
Yeah.
You know, cousins and whatnot. And so having these, you know, five houses has been a lifesaver for all of those people. At different times, different people have been using those spaces. So to cut it off, because you're only thinking about a nuclear family, might not be appropriate for all the different types of families that we have, anyway.
Yeah, we definitely don't think about just the nuclear family, and Hope was presenting at the Queer Housing Summit this weekend about that. But the, yeah, I mean, the ratio I was describing could apply to a family trust that 80 people are the beneficiaries of, and they are permitted to own four times that number of properties. So that would be quite generous. But, yeah, so just to name that, that I do think that there is a way to kind of work out the fine details of this policy that I think would at least address that concern, and that, to allow LLC ownership for the same reasons, as long, as long as the LLCs are owned by, by, you know, you, not hedge, not Blackstone, right, like not a hedge fund. So that could be part of the certification that Councilmember Bana was talking about, that you're certifying that the LLC members don't include any corporate investors, for example.
All right. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I think like, I, I feel like the devil is in the details. And I think when I, when it was presented by Councilmember Bana, it was more broad. And then it seems to me that what the presentation are and what Councilmember Bana is presenting to us, there is a disparity that we need to address. And I thank Councilmember Sue and Councilmember Robinson for bringing all these nuances. Because what we don't want is to create something because, like, we are a progressive city, but then it's going to be really impacting families that have been here for three, four generations, that have been doing this. So these nuances have been, like, is, is needed to be taken. And I think, like, coming out with a number of four, like, I, I feel it's just really arbitrary, in, in a sense. I agree with no having this hedge fund, the big corporation to own houses. But I believe that so many people have been creating their family wealth through having multiple houses. And I don't know what their number is, but like, trying to just kind of like block that from, from families in Richmond, I don't think like this is progressive, right? So I think the devil is in the detail. And for me, what I am experiencing right now is that the presenter of this idea has a broader idea, but the presenters, you guys, has a more detail that it doesn't quite, kind of like, get together with what Councilmember Bana is talking about.
I just wanted to thank everyone for their due diligence and engagement. It speaks volumes of you as leaders and how much you care and love about this city. I do believe with the advent of so many of these laws rolling across America in so many different states and on the federal level, this is almost an inevitable thought. And to speak to Councilmember Wilson's comment earlier, it made me think, what I think about most of the time, which in terms of policy and law, is there's not enough preemptive thought in the world. But we can certainly get ahead of these things. And to Councilmember Jimenez's comment in terms of the devil being in the details, we greatly look forward to working more closely alongside of you, showing up with you in whatever capacity that we can, to make sure that these details are hammered out and to address all of your concerns, because they are valid and not ones, most of, some of which we had not yet considered. So we, thank you so much.
We thank you for the presentation, and there, there's nothing to vote on because it was just to receive the report. But the council members raised a lot of unintended consequences, you know, which, which, you know, are there. And, and I don't think the issue is so much as to who buys properties, the issue is how they use them, you know? And, and we know that corporations are going to use them for, for profit, whereas, whereas families use them for, for security. And there's a big difference between profit and security, especially when your job is to make profit and nothing else. So, so I, I think when we look at this, we need to look at how to deal with the people who are buying properties for profit as opposed to people who are buying properties for, for family, for, for life support. So thank you. All right. If there's no more comments, we'll move on to the next item. And thanks, thanks again.
I would like to sincerely thank you. Thank you very much, and please stay in touch.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, you know, feel free to have conversations with councilmembers, you know, because I'd, I'd be interested in, in looking at the ordinance and seeing exactly more details in, in what it is you're thinking about. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is item V2, which is to adopt a resolution establishing a sister-city relationship between the City of Richmond, California and Sebatia, Palestine.
Thank you. This is an item that Councilmember Jimenez and Councilmember Bana and I have put on. It's my honor to co-sponsor this sister-city item with those members. And I've received many, many questions about Sebatia. And while I've shared what I can, words alone can't convey the richness of its history, its culture, and the people. So for that reason, I'd like to share this video, which offers a glimpse of what makes Sebatia so meaningful. So KCTR, could you please play the video?
KCRT, do we have the presentation? Or the video? If you can pull it up.
That was his, Sebatia.
I think they're having this.
Welcome to Sebatia, the city of August, home of the tomb of John the Baptist, and one of Palestine's most hidden treasures. History and traditions are everywhere in Sebatia. The inhabitants of what is now a typical Palestinian village are the proud inheritors of a glorious past spanning five millennia of history. Several scientific expeditions uncovered the secrets of Sebatia. Their findings would change the village forever. In 1908, a team of archaeologists from Harvard University led the first excavations, helped by the local community. The oldest remains they found date back to the Bronze Age. Archaeologists also uncovered remains of a royal palace. The stone masonry was typical from the Phoenician building techniques during the Iron Age. Among the remains of the palace, the Harvard expedition found an ivory collection, mixing Phoenician and Pharaonic styles, along with inscriptions on pottery fragments, referring to goods such as wine and oil, probably sent to the city as taxes. All these elements indicate that it was an important seat of power at that time. During the eighth century B.C., Sebatia was captured by the Assyrians. In 332 B.C., the city was retaken by Alexander the Great, inaugurating Sebatia's Hellenistic period. During his reign, he built massive fortifications around the Acropolis. Few remains of this period can be seen today, except this circular defensive tower. The city really reached its greatest glory and prosperity under the Roman Empire, when Sebatia became Sebatia. In 30 B.C., the Emperor Augustus awarded the city to Herod the Great, who named it Sebast, which means Augusta in Greek, in honor of the emperor. Herod the Great carried out an ambitious building program. He built a four-kilometer-long city wall surrounded by towers. Only one gate was found in the southwestern part of the city. Close to the side of the former royal palace, he erected a temple dedicated to Augustus to show his loyalty to the emperor. The temple used to stand at the top of the stairs. This large plain used to be the heart of the Roman city, the forum where people used to gather and shop. It was surrounded by colonnades on all sides. At the end of the second century, a basilica was added to the west end of the forum. The building served as a tribunal. The fact that some columns are still standing is quite exceptional. It is a demonstration of how advanced the Roman antisemitic engineering was. The forum was connected to the main city gate through the cardo, a colonnaded street. On each side of the road, there was a roofed walk for pedestrians and a row of shops behind. This must have been a colossal undertaking. It included at least 600 columns and was about a kilometer long. The Romans knew how to keep their population entertained, and Sebatia was no exception. Further down the hill stands the stadium. It was probably dedicated to racing. The Roman city also included a theater. Only the first 14 rows are visible today, but archaeologists think there were another 10 above, so that the theater could host up to 2,500 people. Numerous Hellenistic and Roman tombs were found in Sebatia. An impressive mausoleum was excavated in the present-day city center. Bodies were buried in coffins decorated with animal figures. The most intact one is now exhibited in the city's archaeological museum. During the Byzantine period, Sebatia became the Sea of a Bishop, linked to Saint John the Baptist, referred to as Sayyidah Yahya in Islamic texts. There is a strange story related to the death of the saint. According to the legend, John the Baptist was beheaded on Sebatia's hilltop. The head was taken elsewhere, but his body remained there, and the Byzantines built a monastery church. Sebatia is now a Muslim village, but there is still one Christian family living here, keeping the tradition alive. Another Byzantine church was built in the present-day village to house the tomb of John the Baptist, now located on the compound of the mosque. The crypt is located under these two dome buildings. The smaller one covers a flight of stairs leading to the tomb. The second one is a sanctuary covering it. The compound is a speaking example of how the sacred sites were built, destroyed and rebuilt throughout the ages. The Byzantine church was damaged. When the Crusaders came, they built a cathedral on the remains. It was then destroyed and rehabilitated into a mamleuk, and later, an Ottoman mosque dedicated to the same saint, John the Baptist, or the prophet Yahya in the Islamic tradition. The Ottomans were known for the development of the railway across the empire. The famous Hejaz railway that used to connect Damascus to Medina had a stop in Sebatia. Located in the valley down the hill, the Masaeudia was Sebatia's former station. With its narrow streets, stone houses, and domed roofs, the city center is a prime example of traditional Palestinian architecture from the late Ottoman period. Over the last years, tourism has been growing in Sebatia. Hiking trails have been marked in the surroundings, and Sebatia is a highlight of the Masar Ibrahim, a long-distance cultural trail across West Bank. In the mid-'90s, a vast renovation program started. Several old buildings were rehabilitated into guesthouses. There are now three guesthouses and several restaurants in the village, enabling visitors to experience the incredible local hospitality and have an unforgettable trip in this millinery town.
All right, thank you. You saw at the end that Masar Ibrahim-
You saw at the end that Masar Ibrahim al-Khalil and the Palestinian Ministry of Tourism and Antiquities in the municipality of Sebastia made the film to show us who it is we want to join partnerships with. We... Well, when I initiated this with the mayor of Sebastia, I found out that Nablus, which is close to Sebastia, had a sister city with Boulder, Colorado. Boulder, Colorado, sent an email out to all the council members, wishing us well and offering any assistance that we might need. So... Some of the examples of what that sister city does is they have an early readers program, supporting publishing of Palestinian children's stories. They have a student-to-student pen pal, engaging classes of students to get to know each other through pairing with same-age students in each city. They have yoga teacher training, training yoga teachers in Nablus. And then they do exchanges, hosting visitors from Nablus and bringing delegations to Nablus to build professional and personal relationships and areas of collaboration and partnerships. And then they have volunteering, supporting students and other Boulderites to offer community services in Nablus. These are the sorts of things that we could do to foster an understanding of their culture and having them understand our culture, so that we can build bridges, which is very important at this time. So... Are there any speakers?
We have two in-person speakers, and if anyone online would like to speak, if you could please raise your hand now. I have Don Gosny and Mark Wasberg. Don Gosny, if you could come up, please.
Thank you. You know, we've read both online and in this resolution that, and I quote, "The establishment of a sister-city relationship between Richmond and Sebastia will encourage cultural, educational, and economic exchanges." When I questioned one of the council leaders, stating that, quote, "Most sister-city relationships are established to promote business", and again, quote, "Can we expect Richmond and Gaza to establish any kind of business relationship?" The response from this community leader was that this first sentence is nonsense. I thought it was a legitimate question. So are we being misled in this resolution about establishing economic exchanges? And when multiple people asked point-blank then and now whether you condemn Hamas and what Gaza did on October 7, 2023, we have yet to hear or read a denouncement of that atrocity. And isn't this a country that teaches in their schools that Israel should be exterminated? The song they sing, "From the River to the Sea", was written into their charter to mean that they should kill all of the Jews and eliminate Israel. Is this the cultural exchange mantra that you want to bring back here to Richmond? Of course, we all saw how the council, and especially the council leadership, handled the extreme disruption to the council meeting and the city in the aftermath when they busted in hundreds of pro-Gaza and even pro-Hamas supporters when they passed the resolution supporting this. What are we to think when we remember how not seven feet in front of you, some of your friends attacked a member of the media, resting on his knees, taking their photos? How after the vote, some of the council leadership gathered with their friends for a hug fest, sang chants, including "From the River to the Sea", and had their photos taken with them? While you were sitting here at the diocese, you couldn't be in the overflow crowd, where there were a couple of hundred of your friends who were openly hostile to anyone they thought was a Jew. I had four women block my path and hostilely ask me what I was doing there. I told them that I was with the media and was covering the story. One told me that the media was full of Jews, and I looked like a Jew. Instead of bringing this community together, your actions routinely divide the community and even instill fear amongst those in your community
Your time has expired, thank you.
that are convinced that at least four of you hate Jews, despite Israel and anyone that refuses to embrace your new friends.
The next speaker is Mark Wasberg.
Don Gosny is right. The only culture they're going to teach their children how to be bombers, slap bombs to the little children so they could go to Israel, start blowing them up. You forgot to show the videos when there was burning babies in ovens. So like Don Gosny said, he stood with the Palestinian terrorist organization, clenching his fist, praising Hamas, praising terrorism, hate, and murder. And you're going to go over there and shake their hand? Well, who's going to protect you? Israel's right now is going to invade Palestine. If Palestine's gone, and you people are stupid enough to make friends with these people? It's just a matter of time before Israel invades our whole entire country, and they're going to take it over. Who's going to protect you? You going to have Hamas protecting you? Are you going to have the Israel army protecting you? I don't think so. Soon as they find out you're from America, you're going to be in bad shape. I mean, this is stupid. See, this is what the RPA does. They sponsor terrorism and hate. They stand up for criminals. I mean, this is getting... And this is your government, people. This is your government here in Richmond standing up for this garbage. This is what they do. Don Gosny took almost every word out of my mouth. But you should have showed the babies being burned up and the people being cut up, burned alive. This is why Israel's going to annihilate Palestine. It's gone. Soon as they invade it, they're already invading it now. They're just going to go up there and set up a whole new country. Everybody in Palestine hates Israel. They want to see Israel wiped off the face of the earth. These people have been fighting since biblical times, and you're too stupid to realize it. And this is your mayor supporting hate and terrorism. And you need to get this son of a bitch out of office, because we don't need criminals like that in our government.
My time has expired, thank you. And I do see speakers on Zoom. Ursula, can you please call the speakers? Thank you.
The speakers are Musa Tariq, Emily Ross, Sarah C., Sue, and Tarnal Abbott. Please be prepared to unmute yourself when your name is called, and you will each get up to two minutes to address the council. Musa, you may begin.
Good evening, esteemed mayor and council members. My name is Musa, with CARE, the Council on American Islamic Relations. We want to start by thanking the city for recognizing International Day of the World's Indigenous Peoples, recognizing Women's Equality Day, and standing against land grabs in Richmond. We're here today to urge you to adopt the resolution establishing a sister-city relationship between Richmond and Sebastia, Palestine. You can hear me, right? Okay, perfect, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Perfect. Yeah, again, we're here to urge you today to adopt the resolution establishing a sister city between Richmond and Sebastia, Palestine, which is the home of the tomb of John the Baptist. Palestinians are an indigenous people with deep historical roots in the land going back thousands of years, and Sebastia is one of the oldest continuously inhabited towns in the world. Yet today, communities like Sebastia face dispossession, military occupation, and cultural erasure. Assaults by Israeli soldiers are a daily reality in Sebastia. The youth hide in their homes whenever Israeli soldiers approach the town. This past January, an Israeli army sniper shot and killed a 14-year-old child, and he bled to death as the Israeli soldier celebrated the shot. Establishing this sister-city relationship is not just symbolic. It opens pathways for cultural exchange, connection, and the chance for Richmond to stand in solidarity with a community struggling to preserve its heritage and future in the face of ethnic cleansing and genocide. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers Jimenez, Bana, and Mayor, for co-sponsoring the resolution establishing a sister-city relationship between Richmond and Sebastia, Palestine, and reaffirming the city's historic commitment to justice and solidarity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Emily Ross. Emily, you may begin.
Good evening, council and community. Emily Ross, I'm a Richmond resident, calling to support this item, establishing the sister-city relationship with Sebastia, and really wanting to thank Mayor Martinez and council members Bana and Jimenez for your leadership here. I think the sister-city relationship is a really beautiful one, and I've seen it with the existing sister-city relationships that our city has. It's both symbolic, but there's also like an opportunity for depth in that relationship. And I think the cadence at which we've established sister-city relationships, like this kind of fits right in of like we're on... We've got our established relationships, and we're kind of on track to, if we have capacity, to fold another in. And I think Sebastia is a great fit. I wanted to like push back a little bit about the... I mean, for one, the West Bank and Gaza are different places. And even if they weren't, that's kind of a moot point, but like... You know, there was this point made about what economic ties or contributions could be provided. For one, I think there are important cultural connections that could be made. And also, it's the belief that this would be a one-way street, and this community doesn't have anything to offer us. It's just like a faulty assumption. So I guess I can leave it there. Support this completely. And I think establishing relationships and solidarity across distance is like an important way for us to be in the world. So hope you'll support, and thank you again.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sarah Cantor. Sarah, you may begin.
Hi, thank you so much for taking my comment. My name is Sarah Cantor. Sorry, my name is Sarah Cantor. I'm a Richmond resident, and I'm fully in support of the sister-city relationship with Sebastia. I think that our in-person speakers did an incredible job of showing why this type of arrangement is necessary and the type of valuable cultural exchange that can happen. I heard a lot of ignorance about what life is actually like for people in the West Bank. I also heard in the agenda report about this that some of the ideas that were proposed were really focused on like schoolchildren and connecting children across the world with each other. And I think that we can all agree that children, the children of the world, deserve love and support and connection. And I'm really grateful to council for taking these relationships and trying to build across the divides that are present in our world. And I also wanted to speak to, I think that economic exchange is an important element of sister-city relationships, but it is not the extent of what we get out of a sister-city relationship. And I am grateful to council members Bana and Jimenez and Mayor Martinez for being able to see the well-rounded benefits of this relationship. And thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sue, and if you could please state your name for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay, my name is Sue Khan. And I think the sister-city arrangement is a good one in certain circumstances. Richmond already has a sister-city arrangement with Shimada in Japan, and it seems to work really well. And there's an exchange that happens annually with schoolchildren and adults. When I was recent, I wonder how many of the city council members have visited this city in Nablus, in Samaria? And how many of these city council members have visited Israel? It's a question I have. I would think that you would have wanted to go there and see for yourself what is happening now. The area does have a rich history. It's incredible. I visit Israel on the regular. In my last visit, I tried to get a tour to Nablus and could not find an Arab, or Israeli, or a Jewish Israeli, or anyone to take me to Nablus. Because the fact is that right now, Nablus, where this city is located, is recognized as the leading locale for suicide terrorists out of 683 locales studied. The fact right now is that Nablus is a hub for several active militant groups, including the Lion's Den and the Nablus Brigade, as well as the Palestinian Islamic Jihad Al-Aqsa Martyrs Brigade. It is disappointing to me that the city council is considering this particular city as a sister city to the city that I live in. The fact that...
Thank you, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Tarnal Abbott. Tarnal, you may begin.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Tarnal Abbott. I'm a resident of Richmond. Look out, there's a terrorist underneath every bush. Run, hide, cover your heads. Help, help, the terrorists are here. All joking aside, sister cities were established in the 1950s by then-President Eisenhower because he articulated that sometimes governments fail to reach diplomacy and that the real diplomacy that can happen is from people to people. And that is what sister-city relationships are all about. I have been a member of the Richmond-Regla-Cuba Friendship Committee for 26 years. And that is a city and a country which is under a total blockade from the United States. And it's, you know, it's really a struggle to maintain that relationship. And we do it literally through people-to-people connections, because the governments are so unable to come to any kind of diplomatic resolve that, you know, it's up to us as human beings to reach out to fellow human beings. And I think this ties in perfectly well with other topics that we have covered tonight, you know, about resiliency and reaching out to other cities in times of chaos and difficulty. The planet is at risk. Our very lives are at risk. The political tensions are heating up. We're all at risk of nuclear war. All hell is breaking loose in the Middle East. And if we don't reach out a hand as a city to take the hand of another city, who's going to do it? It is up to us to stop this madness. And we are all people. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was our last public speaker.
Sorry, thank you. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you. Creating a sister relationship with Sebastia is the right thing to do. Establishing a city partnership between Richmond and Sebastia is a powerful step toward demonstrating our solidarity with the Palestinian community, both here at home and abroad. It sends a clear message that we do not support the ongoing war and the tragic loss of life among innocent civilians, including children, mothers, and families in Palestine. This partnership stands as a symbol of peace, unity, and mutual respect. It affirms our commitment to justice and human rights, and it shows that our city is not indifferent to the suffering endured by our brothers and sisters in Palestine. The violence must end. The killing must stop. Through this sister-city initiative, we raise our voices for peace and dignity for all people. And yes, Palestine must be free and let its people to have the sovereignty to decide their future. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Councilmember Bana? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, please. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree, I like sister cities, as obviously I've gone to the three of them that we have already. Having a sister-city relationship is very important because we're able to share our culture, we're able to share ideas, we're able to bring things back and forth. Establishing the right sister city, the three sister cities before, I didn't get a chance to opine on them, but they were good options at the time. And still now, they still are good options. My question about Sebastia is, as I'm looking at our city website, and as I'm looking, I went to go look at sort of guides to establishing a sister city. We should be looking, as the three other cities we have, at similarities: population, geography, cultural significance, et cetera. We have port... We have a port. The other sister cities we have have a port or have access to one. We have similar population. We have a lot of more similarities. Right now, Sebastia is only 3,000 in population. So it's not even as big as one of our districts. Nablus, which is a city that is close by, it's about 11 kilometers away, also in the West Bank, also part of Palestine, has a much closer population to Richmond. There are about 174,000. It's a city that's already been established by another city in this country. So there's already that groundwork set up. And for Nablus, they... Nablus has full Palestinian civil and security control. And that's very important as we're trying to start a relationship with the Palestinian government there and community there. Sebastia is under Palestinian civil control, but Israel security control. So for us to gain access to the various locations if we were to visit will be a lot more challenging. The video that you showed was great, but I believe, and I've never been to Sebastia, but I have been to Nablus. But I believe the video, the majority of it, are sites that are under Israel control. So all the archaeological sites. So I just think we're going to have a lot more challenge in trying to create the sister city if we were to do Sebastia versus Nablus. So if we were to... I would like to recommend that we move with Nablus. And then maybe later on, once we establish one, we can come back around and looking at others, not just in the West Bank. But we can look at Gaza, and hopefully soon, there won't be a war there anymore. And at that time, Gaza would need more assistance. But I would like to recommend that we go with Nablus because it's going to be something that's already established and it's something that we're going to be able to actually participate with fully. And we'll be able to travel to it without having any more checks around the area. So those are my thoughts for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Bana?
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Zepeda, for sharing some concerns. I also read them from a public comment made by Julia Maids from Jewish Community Relations Council. However, let's look at the big picture. Sister-city concept, to me, it's a very interesting concept. Two cities in two different countries, different governments, different culture, different everything. They become sisters. It's stating that people in these two cities are like brothers and sisters, equals, peers. Nobody is considered sub-humans. That's very important. That's very important. We are living in a world where a group of people are officially called sub-humans by another government, being killed, mass murdered, and the world is quiet. The thing we can do to affirm our own little city's humanity is to establish this sister-city relationship. I'm proud of it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move the item.
I second it.
Okay, motion by Jimenez, seconded by Bana to approve the item. Councilmember Brown is absent. Councilmember Bana?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zepeda?
No.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
And the motion passes and the item is approved.
Yes. I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
So I'm sorry, I wanted to make a quick comment on this issue. I was going to say something before the motion was called. So I voted for this tonight because I feel like there is no better substitute to understanding what is going on in Israel-Palestine, but to see it for yourself. I myself went there and spent time in Ramallah in the West Bank, in other towns in the West Bank, in Bethlehem. I went up to Golon, I went to Gaza. I stayed in Tel Aviv, hanging out at the clubs with the young folks, and also took a bus over land to Egypt and spent time there. When you see a place like Ramallah for yourself, you can't unsee it. And then there is just no more debate on what is going on. I feel like it is imperative that people see these things for themselves. And if we can create a bridge so that we can understand better what's going on, we'll have a lot better chance of moving forward. So, thank you.
All right, it is time for adjournment. And I'm going to allow Councilmember Bana.
Then we have... Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Report of officers. We usually don't have that.
I know. And yes, and we do. So, report of officers?
Yes. All right, I just wanted to put out there our... Councilmember Robinson and ours and everyone else voted for it, the native tree survey that's coming out. Staff just finalized it. So you should see that coming out in the next couple of days. We're just doing the last-minute checks on it. But the Richmond community will have an opportunity to vote on what will be the official Richmond native tree. And then we'll be planting that tree here at Civic Center once it is selected. So please keep an eye out for it. It will be on hopefully everyone's social media and trying to get as many people to vote on our official Richmond native tree. That is it for now. Thank you.
Now, time for adjournment. Go ahead.
I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting the name of five journalists who were killed yesterday. A camera is a strong weapon against genocide, murder, and violation of human rights. The five journalists killed in their strike were Miriam Daqah, 33, mother of a 13-year-old, a freelance visual journalist who contributed to The Associated Press and Independent Arabia; Hussam Al-Masri, 48, a contract cameraman for Reuters; Mohammed Salama, 24 years old, a photojournalist and cameraman for Al Jazeera; Muaz Abu Tahha, 27, a freelance video journalist who contributed to Reuters; Ahmed Abu Aziz, 29, a freelance journalist who contributed to Middle East Eye and Qotz Feed. There was a bombing day when they were with their cameras, and then the second bombing happened. And they were murdered.
And I don't know if that's on purpose, but the sound of the bell is like a Tibetan bell announcing the passing of someone into Bardo. Thank you.